Welcome to the March 6th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which is standing.
One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
While we're standing, a brief moment of silence for Michael Yanis, who passed away February 25th at the young age of 27. Thank you.
May I welcome back our secretary, who was speaking. He's back with us.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access television and online. First on the agenda, we have approved the meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2019, and February 6th, 2019.
Vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And accept review the meeting minutes of February 20th, 2019.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, special town meeting date is March 25th, 2019, 7:00 PM at the Middle Senior High School. We have the warrant articles. Through.
You want a motion for the March 25th?
I don't think we need a motion for that. We already set that date.
Alright.
I can't find them. David, do you want to run through them?
It's page 17. Sure. So the first one is, because unfortunately we still do not have a moderator, so we will do as we did at the annual last year, excuse me, is that we will elect a temporary town moderator from the floor. While that is occurring, the town clerk will preside. If nobody is elected, then the town clerk will preside over the meeting as well. Article two is the original purpose of why we called the special town meeting. The Howard Elementary School gymnasium roof is leaking. And so, the Board of Selectmen back in the fall approved a request to the MSBA, which is a state agency for funding of schools, and they have approved us at 52.69% of reimbursement. So, that would be Article two. Article three is, and Article four are both water articles. Article three is the Water Department will be looking to transfer money from water surplus into their existing budget, because they say that their existing budget, that they don't have enough money in it to finalize the end of the fiscal year. And... And then Article four is going to be a borrowing article for a new well. And Article five is because our fuel tanks at the public safety facility are failing, and we have gone out, we've secured three quotes, and we need to start to replace that, because it's much cheaper for the town to fuel there than it is to go to a commercial entity. One item of note is that Article three, it says to increase fiscal year 2020. That's my error, that should be 2019, because that's the existing fiscal year. So, when I ask you for your motion to approve the warrant articles, you'll do it subject to final town council review, giving me the authority to be able to make some last-minute changes.
David, there aren't costs for any of these. Do you have those roughly?
Yep, so Article two, right now the estimate is $413,000. MSBA would give us $217,000. That means the town is on the hook for about $195,000. Article three is, at this point, $115,000, although that could be amended at the last minute. Article four is $460,000, although again, it could be amended at the last minute. In Article five, we received three quotes, all within a couple of thousand dollars of each other. The lowest quote was $35,185. I expect that to be the number at town meeting. And the process is, is that at your next meeting on March 20th, is that the Board of Selectmen will approve the motions at that point, and those motions will include those numbers. Will include the numbers that the department had anticipated using.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions or comments on the articles?
I'm done.
So I need to make a motion to approve the articles subject to town council review and final amendments?
Yep, so I would ask that you make a motion to place these warrant articles onto the warrant, subject to final review by town council.
Alright, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and annual town meeting. We need to take a vote for the date and time. June 3rd, 2019, at the Middle Senior High School. I'm assuming 7:00 PM, David?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
What day of the week is that?
Monday night.
It's a Monday night?
Okay, what's the closing date you want for the?
I'm looking at April 19th, 2019.
Okay, is there a motion to open the warrant for the annual town meeting and to set a closing date of April 19th, 2019?
And I would ask you just to make, at noon, please?
At noon PM. Noon.
I'll vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we also have the annual town election warrant. Do you need a vote on this, David, or is, we just signed this, correct?
I just have to sign it.
Okay, we'll do that at the end.
Are any of the positions contested?
Just one, Board of Assessors has two people running for one position.
Alright. Water Department.
We don't draw a big crowd anymore.
Well, you have to clean up your jokes then.
You're back.
I'm back. How are you?
Am we supposed to sign in here?
Are you waiting for Tom, or do you want to get started?
No, he isn't coming.
Okay. Alright, so what we've been doing with the other departments is trying to highlight changes mostly, this year-to-year changes, and just running through those, so whenever you guys are ready.
So basically, the first few lines are all by contract anyways. Do you want to discuss them, or?
The labor line? So the, are you asking for another person? Is that what that is?
I'm asking for a part-time person. We don't, the Water Department, for every mile of street, there's at least one pipe under that mile of street. In a lot of cases, there are two pipes. We cover it with just the four guys plus I. So, the idea is to start out, see if we can start covering so I can get two crews going out there. Plus, as you get senior employees, right now I'm lucky. Most of my employees aren't senior, they're all new starts. So, I don't run into the vacation, sick time problem. But, once they become senior, then, you know, people get vacation time, and that's a fact, so I just need people.
How much of the 53 is because of the half a person?
I want like, I don't have a clue. That would be $43,685.85.
And that, that's half of FT?
That's a 30-hour person. That's not half, I'm trying for 30. And I sought to pay, I was hyping to hire a skilled person with a skill need that we could use to get stuff off of my back.
At 30 hours, Wayne, does that include benefits?
I did inform Town Hall that I was going to. Whether they remembered at the end, I'm not sure. But the money that I quoted you is just pay.
Okay, but would they would qualify for benefits?
They would qualify for benefits. Once you go about 20 hours and above, you are a benefited person.
Okay, you can keep going.
So, truly, after that, after the labor, we jumped down a long ways before you're not contractor Town Hall. You jump down to heating. It was cut last year, even though we informed everybody that that budget was overrunning as they were cutting it. It did overrun, so I pushed it back up. We're pretty much on track to spend the same amount this year. I'm sorry I can't forecast the weather, but this year looks like a cold winter, and we're going to use it. The electricity, we're running on track to pretty much eat up that budget too. I only increased that a little, but we may eat more. Obviously, the cost of nothing is going down. Water, that's the, that is a line where we repay Easton for the water that we sell to customers there that are West Bridgewater residents. They charge us, and then we charge the customer back. Property maintenance stayed the same. Equipment repairs and maintenance, that increased. And my cost of having anything done is going up exponentially. It used to be I could get a well pumped and the motor changed on the bottom of the pump for about $5,000. It's now costing me between $10,000 and $15,000 a well. So, it jumped a lot.
Sorry, one question on the vehicle repairs.
Yep.
Do you plan on asking for any new vehicles that might have an impact on that for the capital?
This year, no, because I don't have time to look for prices, but my vehicles are really hurting me. They're, they're running down. Even though they're low mileage, when they go out in salt and sand, they, we're welding patches onto a little dump truck. The big chump truck, it's old. It's a giant thing. It'll last, probably lasts forever, because it was built to last forever, but it's like driving a bad tank. We did the equipment repairs. Road repairs, pretty much stayed the same. Yep.
Can I ask you, on road repairs, it's not a significant amount, Wayne, but I noticed in 2018, you spent a little over $7,600. And so far this year, about $2,000, but it's bumping up to $13,000 for fiscal year 20. Any particular reason?
Well, it's always been approved at 13. In the past few years, everybody knows we went through re-metering the town, so only four employees plus me, we didn't get out to do a lot of roadwork. So, if you drive around town now, you'll see a lot of our gate boxes, they're destroyed. I mean, we plow late on asphalt, so they basically, the minute the frost heaves them up, they're gone. And that's just a fact of life. So this year, part of my goals is to go out and repair at least 25% of them. I hope to get more done.
25% of the gates?
Gate box tops. The top that you drive over and you go thump-thump into. It also helps us, because we need to access that. If we have an emergency, I don't want to spend a half hour digging out the dirt that's in it, so it, it's on us, our best interest to get them repaired.
Makes sense.
We are going to make a conscientious effort to do a lot of roadwork this year. Preventive. That one stayed the same from last year. That's the one that I really do for well cleaning. I now try to circuit all of our wells cleaning. I go after a well a year, because if you don't keep them up, you lose a percentage of your yield out of them. And if you let it go too long, you don't get the yield back. Hydrant maintenance, that stayed the same. Hydrant repairs, that stayed the same. Just so you know, hydrant repairs is $2,500. A hydrant cost me $2,000. I didn't move the line, but if I have some money somewhere in my pipes or meters, then I'll buy hydrants out of that. I don't want to fund that line. If I can, if I don't do something else, that's where I go to get it. I don't... Equipment hire, we haven't hired any leasing. Engineering services. Has gone up. So, it was budgeted last year $2,000, it's $5,000 this year. I had to do a Level 1 assessment this year, that cost me $3,000. So, $2,000 doesn't really, the minute you call an engineer, it's a lot of money. And what we do requires, pretty much DEP wants engineers involved in almost everything. And it, they work hand-in-hand with DEP, so they, they know what they're looking for. It's better to use them than us go in and fight with them. We dropped off the engineering pump services. We're hoping to move that to an article as we seek new water supplies. We're actually currently still working through that process right now.
So what you're saying, instead of that $69,000 being part of the operating budget, you're going to move it to an article and have it be a borrowing? Or transfer from surplus?
Yeah, but it'll be funded what we can out of the tie-in fees, which would fall into surplus. But, whatever mortgage can't be paid by that, we'll have to borrow. Or the borrowing will be paid by money that we raise from tie-in fees.
It's almost a five-year process to get any new water source to the street. So, we're a year into this now, and it's not...
We're a year into it, and we haven't got it anywhere.
Good job.
Yeah, it's, it's just paperwork.
It's a lot of work.
It's just paperwork. All it is is engineering paperwork.
You know, it goes in and you wait until they come back and tell you, so...
So, the GIS engineering supplies line, that has gone up. The town has asked us to help fund 30% of a GIS person, which is, the town should take ownership of their own maps. It keeps it in-house, it makes a better map. I work a lot with the GIS. We have a part-time GIS person right now that I utilize. The Water Department, everything we do, for every mile of street, you can see. Once again, there's a mile of pipe under it we can't see. If we document where everything is, when we dig into the street, we don't hit it and make it worse. We know where it is, so we can dig around it.
So I've been told these maps are not up to date, and that the town center is not on the maps. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's on the maps, it's just not on the maps where it really is.
Correctly. So, we still have the old town center on the maps?
Yes. Yes, I found workarounds for that. So, everybody's heart is called a database.
Right.
So, my database is, really is up to date. It's still getting up to date, but it's quite up to date. I mean, the other groups, we've helped, so we try to keep them. And I have reached out, but I can't help if I can't help.
But, but if the basic element isn't correct, then your overlays aren't correct.
Right, so right now I use, I use the flyover to see what I'm doing in the center, because I can't look at the old map. All of my pipes and boxes are in the wrong spot. But the flyover, I light up, and then it, I can see it. But truly, for assessing anybody's property values, all of the lines, because you've changed the size of the property. If the town came, if the state came in and took property, then people lost property.
So which department is responsible for the basic elements?
Assessors is the base map.
An engineer should actually do that. That's got to be done properly. That's, that is the most important part of the whole map. It's getting those lines right.
And you document that in the backside of the database with the metafiles, so that you document any changes you make to a line, you document who touched, who changed, or who altered that line.
So then you can put your overlays...
And where the information came from. And, you know, did it come from the deeds office? Did it come from a deed? Is it, is, where is that, where is that record held right now? That, that information was taken from. So later on, if there's a dispute on a line, then they can look back and see if an error was made, or, you know, you know, how that change came about.
How long has the center of town been done for?
It's been done for a while.
Oh, three years? Three years?
Yeah, at least three, because I've been yelled at by the Dunkin' Donuts people. Unfortunately, they got shut down one too many times, and he did get mad about it. I couldn't help it, you know? Go ahead and yell at me, I didn't do it, but I took the brunt. Yeah, the map is, so the map is a map, but it's the database behind it that is everything.
So similar to Oliver, what the state uses? That type of GIS?
Yeah, I have imported from free flyovers from the state. I think they're beginning to learn that they need to do their, get their things in the wintertime or the fall when the leaves don't have trees, because they ask questions. But truly, the map, it's a map. It's the data that's under the map. You can have any kind of data you want. And that's where the true value of the GIS is.
Like you could, when I was here, you could poke on your house law, and up would come your whole assessment of your property, your tax bill, and all that. You could, if you, if there was a block there that was green instead of gray, if it was green, you click on it, it would give you all the septic paperwork that was in the Board of Health's office. You, you could pull up all the records that was on your property, on your septic system. If you poked on a, on a manhole, it would tell you what the inlet elevation was, the outlet elevation was, what the material was in the pipes that led up to that. Everything was there. If you, if you hit a, a street sign, it would tell you what the sign was. Stop sign, yield sign, what the reflectability of it, of it was. All that data, it's all information. Click on a hydrant. So, the whole column, all the records were attached to that map. Anything that you could see had data behind it.
And the state's really requiring it for a lot. I believe the state requires the assessors to have GIS files now. Other groups are going to be required. The Water Department is no different, we're required.
I mean, if you had the map in here, you wouldn't even have to ask another department, you know, what the, if you wanted to know what the septic was on a certain property. At your meeting, you could just click on it, you could see what the septic system was, where it was. You could see everything about it.
What it cost me $10,000 to get changes made on my map with an engineering group? You don't get much. So it behooves us to own somebody inside.
But we've already spent probably a million dollars keeping this map up when I was here. They built it, the first, the first map that was done was $250,000. And we've been spending money for 20-something years. And the Board of Health had all their records all scanned, and then they're all downloaded onto the map, so that they're all connected. And then the Highway Department, I know they put all the street signs in, because they hired an engineer to go out and put all the street signs on. So there was so much data that was put onto that map, but it just seems like it's not being utilized, and it's not being kept up.
Hey Wayne, I just want to verify. You sent me an email yesterday, you're going to increase that line to $15,000 in the budget request.
Yes, it is on the sheet that we're looking at, here it is.
Yeah, so just to let you know.
It came to $15?
It came in yesterday afternoon.
I'm sorry, I forgot that that didn't happen for what you were seeing. We all done mapping?
Thank you.
Alright, so telephone, the next changes I see are my office supplies, which is, it's steadily increasing, so I'm just trying to stay ahead of it, but we usually spend ahead of whatever I increase the prior year, so... But this year I did go up by $1,400. Computer saved us a lot of money. Tools and supplies did the same.
Tools and supplies are the same, but you've overspent. Just so far this year, you've spent 19, almost 20.
Yep.
And you're not even through the whole year. So how do you propose going from 20 down to 13?
So we had to ban a year of production last year. We've contained our production, so by that, we're feeling that we're going to see a reduction in costs in those lines that are overspent.
Tools and supplies, that's not actually like hammers and saws and stuff like that, that's...
That could be.
That's stuff for the iron removal plant, and stuff like that. It's all maintenance stuff.
I wish I could say it ran out to Kmart and something only costs $5, but it's usually $5,000 or...
No, and I hear you, I'm, that's what I'm saying. It's, you've already overspent it this year. You're at over 20, and you're not even, almost 20, and you're not even through the year. And in 18, you spent 23, too.
Right, I'm also tracking our usage, our, what we sell for water, because basically we are a business, and my sales are down from last year too, because it's rained every third day. If we go into next year with rain every third day, it might be taking money away from me next year. Chemicals, I did bump that up by $5,000. I'm required by law to do corrosion control treatment to our water. That means I've got to, at the minimum, raise the pH level of the water. A tanker of potassium hydroxide is $15,000 each time it comes. In the summertime, and in the, the early fall, I can have a tanker a month coming. So, it's not a line that you want to short-fund at any time.
But would that leak have an impact on where you're spending? I mean, you haven't come close to 120 in previous years.
Right, and this year we will, I can't tell. We're also bringing another station online if we can ever get DEP to approve it and put it out.
And while the leak would help, would have more chemicals being used, the other issue here is, we've also been changing, looking at changing some other chemicals because of a couple of areas we had quality complaints. Those chemicals are more expensive. So that, we, you know, we want to have enough in that item that we can adjust things as needed also. I mean, that's one that, see...
I'm going to mention the dreaded C-2 chlorine. And I, nobody likes to smell it, nobody likes to taste it. We try to keep it to a minimum, but if I keep consistent, if I fail on my monthly tests, at some point I'll be required to put it in a dose that nobody will want to drink their water. So I, it's a fine line. I work with DEP on this, and we, we produce safe quality water, and I try to put the minimum amount in there, but at some point, it costs money, and I have to put it in to protect us.
What is that state water tax, what's that all about?
So they, to fund mass DEP, they charge us on our, what we produce for water, they charge us a, a flat-rate tax, and they determine that each year. So it does go up slowly.
It's based on the amount of water you pump every year. So many cents for a thousand.
So, bottom line, even though the budget went up by 3.26%, if you, part of that, the reason that number's that low is because you're moving the $69,000 to the article.
We can't hide anything from you.
Just confirming, the math.
It does keep it low.
Yeah. So...
We're not trying to raise it up, I...
I know.
I understand everything's going up, and trust me, I know.
About that fleet insurance, we brought the bid on that?
We do that with you.
I know, we see it.
You handle that.
I thought you'd think that...
It all goes as it should, right?
We don't get involved in it.
Okay.
Do you have any other lines you...
Did you build in? Did you build in, so you have a couple warrant articles, one of them being a well. Did you build in that, um, loan payment into this?
So it is none in this. It, if we think that we borrow this money, I can't start anything without having the money available. But it could take almost a year for that to happen. I was thinking about that while I was eating my supper. It's not in this budget. But we get X amount while we're in process and the process could be a long timeout. So he won't actually bond it out or borrow it all out until we're all the way through it.
We'll have to borrow short-term notes though.
Yeah.
During the, during the process, then we'll just pay interest on them.
So I did, have spoken with Scott, so there won't be any sticker sharks this time when notes come to fruition. But I haven't asked him yet in the short term, as we move through a year of trying to get the well done, how much that will affect my budget.
How long does it take to?
So, uh.
Build, develop a well, I'm not sure what.
If you, if you were allowed just to go out and drill the well, probably about three or four months. But it takes five years of paperwork to get DEP to approve it. And if even it's an emergency and if even you don't have any water, you're not gonna get it approved any faster. It's about a five-year process. Because what they make you do is what we're in the process right now, is we have a couple sites that we think that we wanna use for water. But we have to prove to the state, uh, DEP that the, that there aren't better places. And they're looking at other, um, water basins in our town that they think that possibly that are less strained and that we could use those instead. So we have to look at them. So the engineers have to go research it and prove to them that that wasn't a good site. That's not a good idea. Then they let you go back to the, to your, you know. But it takes a long process. It's all paperwork, back and forth.
The replacement, well, the well is really, it pulls in the summertime, it pulls down close to shutdown. So we do need to replace it. It's in a very good aquifer, except they make you go through multiple hoops. They're not gonna stop us from replacing it, but there'll be a ton of engineering and a ton of paperwork to go along with it. So it's not putting the thing in the ground quick. The paperwork forever.
The last one we did was on Manly Street. They used to allow us to go within a fifty-foot circle and just go replace the well. Just, you know, you dismantle one well, you, if you're within fifty feet, you just go do it. Now, on this one, we have to do a pump test. We have to do a twenty-four-hour pump test. We have to do, you know, we have to do all this, uh, proving to the state that the water quality is there. We never had to do that. You know, like five or six years ago, we just went and drilled the well because fifty feet away, the well was fine. But now you have to prove that the quality of the water is there and that you're not affecting any other wells in the area. So it's all paperwork. And it's gonna cost us about five hundred thousand dollars this time to replace the well. And I think the last time we did it was probably like a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
What can we expect of capital expense there? You got anything major or painting and inside tanks and that kinda stuff coming up?
So the, one thing that I do in a tank inspection, and I'm, I increased the line because of that by a thousand dollars, 'cause though, the tank that I just had inspected this year cost me four thousand something. This tank, if, if it's gonna be a lot above five thousand, then I'll do a smaller tank. But I'm required by law every so many years to inspect the insides of the tanks. Even though we just had them prettied up outside, they still wanna know what it looks like inside. And it still looks pretty, but they wanna know. So I did increase that line by a thousand. There shouldn't be any capital expense for that. Should be covered by the budget.
Biggest capital expense we got coming up is building another well, replacement well, and find, and trying to get another well online.
Now, that other tank you built up there, there was anticipation of a business come in and another came in. The well up on, um.
Wellness Street.
Wellness Street, yeah.
But they, but the businesses up there are paying for it. Homeowners aren't paying for that tank.
All right, are, are we drawing on that at all up there or?
Yeah, oh yeah, it has water in it.
Has water on it. Everybody's.
That's a question I had. I had to, are you drawing anything for the service, uh, for the consumers here out of that well?
Um, it helped them greatly when we were working on a leak recently, because they didn't have to be down for eight hours.
Do the homeowners? Are you saying the residential customers?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're.
In other words, it's in, it's in use?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Living right down the street from it, we get water that does go through that tank.
You must have good pressure up there now.
We have nice steady pressure. Before, we used to have sprinklers.
Yeah, I know.
But no, that, everyone gets the benefit of it, depending on the type of system.
Good.
And we doubled the, we doubled the fire flow on, on Manly Street when that tank went in. The water that could be delivered to a fire doubled. Right about where Bertorelli's buildings are, where that cemetery is, that little cemetery, that, that water flow and that hydrant doubled.
Good. Are there any other questions? Alright. You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you back.
Good to see you too.
Good. Tom's on A G. How are you, Marilyn?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good.
Hi, how are you?
You doing alright?
Hey, um, what we've mostly been doing is just, um, going through any lines that have changed.
Okay.
If you could just run through those and speak to those.
Um, did you wanna start with salaries or did you wanna, um, start with?
Uh, yeah, so obviously the first line, we know we signed our contract.
Right.
So.
Thank you. Alright, um, for, um, the next line, the clerical salaries, uh, pretty much, um, we just had two people that did a step increase before the, the rate as of six thirty-two thousand nineteen. So, um, they started this, that line with a, with a new rate. So then we went two percent above that. Two and a half percent. And then the next category, other salaries. All but one person, that would be Surenau, all but one person that was given a dollar raise instead of the two and a half percent.
What percentage is that roughly? Do you know?
I don't. I just, um.
They weren't given any raises last year? How, how does that work out?
They were given raises last year. However, most of them, um, the majority of them were making, um, between twelve dollars and sixty-one cents and fifteen twenty-two. So the reason for the dollar, uh, for those that were making under fifteen dollars an hour, because of the, um, the federal minimum wage has gone up to fifteen dollars an hour. I know that, um, if any of these people wanted to have another job, go for another job, they'd probably be hired at fifteen dollars an hour. And we've got such a great team, I just can't afford to let them go. Plus, if I hired somebody, they'd probably want fifteen dollars an hour to start.
Is there, um, any increase in hours as well as?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's it for salaries.
Yep.
And then the only change is made is, uh, let's see. Heating fuel. Heating fuel has gone up one thousand, uh, I put up one thousand dollars. And that's because we're now open three nights a week for new programming as well as Saturday mornings. And we are using more fuel to support that. Property maintenance went down two thousand dollars. And that's because we have a new janitorial company came in with a lower bid. And, um, so I, I reduced that by that two thousand dollars. Vehicles repairs, we've gone up, um, three hundred dollars. As you can see that, um, I'm over budget for, um, the fiscal of nineteen, two thousand nineteen. And that's, um, that's our van. We've had some difficulties with it and, um, we're now pursuing bids and whatever for next year's, um, capital budget.
For replacements?
Yeah.
Do you have two? Do you have two vans?
We do. We have one van that's, um, granted from, um, that DOT. And they, um, it's a twelve passenger. And that's why, that's the best they could do for us. So we needed a fourteen passenger. We use them both.
Okay.
And that's working out good?
That's working out really well.
Yeah. Have you had any issues where you couldn't get people because of maintenance issues or?
Uh, no. We, well, no, because we do have the other van to fall back on if we need it. Yeah.
How does that work with the maintenance? Do they do some of the maintenance on them?
Uh, no, from what I understand, it's all on us. Um,
Okay.
Um, I guess that, that, that deal was refused at the time then.
Yeah, I, I remember it was refused.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the only other change is postage. And, uh, we have gone from, um, a mailing of approximately fourteen hundred newsletters to sixteen, over sixteen hundred. So, um, that's necessary for us to be able to get that out. We've been pushing very hard for people to go online to pick it up off the website and to get on the, um, email list. It's getting there, but it's difficult to change people's ways. And that's that.
Okay. Any questions?
I haven't, huh?
No.
I think she's done a fine job over there with all the programs and everything else. And how is the, the money that comes in there? I know you get money from other sources. Is, is that on the upgrade or, uh, from, from different organizations there? Is, is that coming in?
Yes, I, I just received a twenty thousand dollar, um, grant from the Formula Grant last year. It was, um, approximately fifteen hundred plus. And so that's gone up. Um, they gave us, uh, more than twelve dollars ahead. This year it was nine dollars and something last year. So we've done very, very well with that. And let's hope that we stay at that rate. Don't take it away once they give it to me.
That's the survival rate, right?
Yeah, right. Right. So that helps us if you, um, pay for some of the salaries in the outreach department and, and whatever. So, um, that just came in. I have to use that by June thirtieth. And so that's gonna be paying those salaries. So it reduce, help me on that line item for fiscal two thousand nineteen. The other is the nutrition grant and, um, that's approximately nine thousand dollars a year. That helps us out. Um, we also have, um, several benefactors that like to pay for meals. And so I'm going to say maybe four or five times a year. If we have a special occasion, they'll come in and they'll, they'll pay for everybody. And, um, we don't tell anybody they're doing that till we get there. Otherwise, it would be a little bit too crowded. Um, so that, that's all going very well, um, with, with the grants. I just received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from, um, um, a group in Brockton. It's, um, we call it the Howard Grant, but it's, um, the home for aged men in the city of Brockton, I believe is what it's called. And so that's gone up from eight thousand dollars to, um, quite a bit more, fifteen thousand dollars. And that's for programming.
Great.
And I just wanted to say real quick, 'cause I'm very proud of this statistic. We, uh, in one year's time, a calendar year, excuse me, I'll get that later. We had a total of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six people through our doors for programs.
That's great.
It's kind of jaw dropping.
Yeah, that's very good.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions, I guess, so.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Have a great night.
You too.
Okay. Board of Health and wastewater.
Evening. Mr. Chairman, board members.
Why, uh, good evening.
Yeah. As you said, board of health and wastewater, so.
Yeah, could you start with wastewater?
Sure.
Like to. I got it. Alright. Wastewater. Okay, so, let's see, wastewater nineteen fifty. Um, just comparing the two from what we approved for fiscal year nineteen to what we're requesting in fiscal year twenty. Um, the equipment repair, repairs is, is, um, increases, you can see, two thousand dollars. Consultant services gone up fourteen thousand. And then equipment replacement, so it's almost, um, a little less than doubling our budget from one to the next. From sixty-six hundred to fiscal year nineteen to twelve thousand, five hundred fiscal year twenty twenty. And the reason is, is that the systems, the systems are getting old. The system at the field, with, at the, um, Howard School Field, you know, the soccer field was built on by a state grant, I think it was like ten or eleven years ago. Um, that handles all of the buildings and, um, well, it's a high school, Spring Street School, PD, I had a pound of library council on aging in Howard. And, uh, we need to find out where some water is missing. Um, we have a lot of infiltration. Like I said, the sys, it's not so much the system that's getting old, but the lines that carry the effluent from the high school back to the fire station and out to the pump chain, which brings it to the field. So, uh, we're looking into hiring a, um, company with a camera to scope out those pipes. There's a cast iron line that comes from the high point, um, from the high school, which brings it through. So that's gonna cost them, some money. Um, also the, uh, we wanna replace some pumps or at least have some money set aside for the pumps. Again, the pumps nineteen years, uh, nine years, ten years have pumped a lot of effluent in, in, in ten years. And, um, that, we haven't had any, we haven't had any replacements. We've been, we've been very, very fortunate. Sometimes the pumps, you know, they can last twenty years, others they last less. Um, let's see. And of course, our consultant services, we, uh, have to report to the state for the amount of water that we do pump to our field. We have a professional engineer who watches over, um, the fields that we have at the Roseell, which takes just the Roseell and the Howard School Field, which obviously takes pretty much the rest of the, the rest of the town. And it's just one letter that we've got from, it's, I'm not checking a letter from our, from our engineer and it just says that, uh, it just mentions how much the pumps run, but the, here's something that you should pay attention to. It's three hundred and twenty-three thousand gallons of effluent were pumped to the Leach Field. This is just in one month. The average daily flow, this is the average daily flow for that month was eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two. Um, we've had a couple of power failures at the, at the council on aging, which had to be addressed. We had a hundred and eighty high water alarms. What's alarming about that is that where is the water coming from? It's not coming from water usage because we, we, um, correlate the water usage to the water meters to the field, to our pumping. So we do have infiltration. So we do need to address that. We don't wanna saturate the field and we are limited to our gallons per day for that field. We need to keep it below ten thousand gallons or else we have to go into another permitting process with the state. Our average, the day, what keeps us going fortunately is the summer months, obviously no schools. So it does keep our yearly average date number down to like fifty-six hundred gallons, but it is steadily increasing. So that's where the additional money is going for, um, for that, uh.
So John, you said you had a hundred and eighty high water alarms in what period of time?
Just for the month.
Just for the month?
Yeah.
Versus what, what, would you have historically?
I don't have that number in front of us. It's just, it, it's just extremely, even still, even if it was a hundred and eighty from the previous month, that's a lot. It's a lot of water. That's a lot of.
Did that suddenly just start happening?
No, it's actually been happening. It's been gradually increasing over the past couple of years. We've had pump companies that are changing floats. But the, the problem is that the groundwater is getting into our system and we need to pump it to the field. Alright. Any other questions on this one? Okay. That was easy. Board of Health. This is easy too. So it is line item fifty-one-ten, Board of Health. Um, biggest increase is the, why don't we come back to fifty-one-ten? The elected officials, just go through the rest of the items if you want. Biggest increase is the, why don't we come back to fifty-one ten, the elected officials, just go through the rest of the items if you want.
Oh no, we can do fifty-one ten now.
Then we can. Elected officials, we feel that, uh, that, uh, first of all, we don't, we don't do it for the money, I mean, it's to give back to the community. But we also, in doing that, I think it's fair to be treated to the other elected boards in terms of compensation. So when you look at the numbers of the other boards in town that are elected, that receive compensation, we receive approximately a third of what the, of what the lowest board is. So for instance, Board of Selectmen, your total line item is ten thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Board of Assessors, which is the highest paid board in town, ten thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. The Water Commission is a seventy-two ninety-five, and this is for all three members, all members have, all boards have the three members. And then you have the Board of Health at twenty-five seventy-seven. We're, we are one of the boards, at least I can speak for myself in window, that do go out when a call occurs. If there is an animal that's hit by a car, it's questionable to be rabid, either through the police or fire, we do go out. As a matter of fact, I've got subpoenaed to go to court a week from Friday for a case that, I guess the eight dollars will cover my day. I mean, but that's what it's, that's what it's all about. Why, I guess it, it comes down to fairness, and why are the other boards making more than us? I've been on the board for now ten or eleven years, and we've always got, got a static increase, two percent or whatever the cost of living has been. I guess the question I ask you is, let's be fair. If fairness is to make everybody comparable to us, so be it. I think the Board of Health should not be discriminated upon in terms of the monetary value that each board gets. Like I said, we are a third less, we are, we're a third of what the lowest paid board, excluding you guys and the assessors, are making. Is that fair? Is that equitable? We have, we have control in town to go to someone's house, to deem their system a failure, to get it pumped out immediately, to protect that groundwater. We have the, we have the authority to go to a restaurant, if we see a health issue, to shut a restaurant down. So it's looking out for the safety of everybody in town. And I'm not, I'm not comparing one to the next in terms of what the boards do. I'm just saying, let's be fair and equitable in terms of the money that the boards make.
So why didn't anyone ask sooner? Why, why was this, why was this allowed to go on for so many years?
I don't have the answer for that. It just came, and honestly, it's not, I mean, I, I don't want to repeat myself, but it's not, it's not that we do it for the money.
No, I, I don't think any, I mean, I'm, I'm not doing this for the money.
Right, and I appreciate that.
Put me in another tax bracket, so it probably costs me money. But the point is, I mean, I'm, I'm not just, I'm not disagreeing with him. It sounds like.
Just make it fair. Make all the boards fair. Either, either, either elevate us to, say, whatever the water department makes at seventy-two, actually, that's what's in our budget, up to seventy-two ninety-five, or lower everybody down to us. I mean, we're all, we all meet twice a month, we all devote our own time to the, to the town, like, like you guys. So does the water department, so do the assessors. But why is the Board of Health discriminated upon in terms of the amount of money that we receive for something that's fair? And we, and we offer just, if not more, to the town than another elected board?
I mean, it doesn't sound to me like it was discrimination, it sounds more like no one asked. I, I, because, I mean, you don't just dole out money if someone's not asking.
I don't have an answer for that, I've only been on the board for like ten or eleven years.
So, what are, I mean, I think, have you looked at other towns?
Yeah, they're all comparable. Forget about the dollar values, the, the doll, the dollar value, in my opinion, is irrelevant. It's what the percentages are compared to the other elected boards in town. For instance, like Avon, you know, their assess is three thousand dollars, their Board of Health, two thousand dollars, their Board of Health, their Board of Selectmen, five thousand, so maybe you guys should look into that. Lakeville, Lakeville, they have three members on the Board of Selectmen, one's at forty-nine ninety-five, then two at forty-five hundred. The assessors are at three at two thousand, excuse me, they have three members of the Board of Assessors. One at two thousand, two at fifteen hundred. The Board of Health, one at two thousand, two at fifteen hundred. So you can see that they're, that they're somewhat, you know, comparable in, in terms of, they're all at the, that they're all the percentages. But we're a third of the lowest paid elected board in town. Why? I don't know.
I, I don't know why.
You did forget the planning board.
They're not paid.
They're not paid?
They're not elected, they're not.
They're elected.
They're not, they're not elected then. So it's the elected, and I didn't, and I didn't, and I didn't count the town clerk, because that's a.
That's a full-time job.
That's a real job.
Full-time job, but the planning board's not paid?
I'm sorry, maybe they're not elected? I just went by the town board last year, the elected.
Alright, um.
You're next.
So.
So that's that. So do as you may, but we can go over the rest of the line items unless you have any other questions on that.
No, no, you can keep going.
Okay. Everything else? Uh, like, line item fifty-one eleven, that's contractual. Tom Six, he's not a contractual, that's, that's our animal control officer. Uh, line item fifty-one twelve, clerical, that's, that's, that's contractual. Our health agent, that's contractual. I'm just going over the increases in the lines.
Yep.
So we don't get confused from one fiscal year to the next. Um, longevity, that's contractual. The GIS supplies, that's just the price increase on the, um, the, the service that we have, where we have, we down, a few years ago, we downloaded our septic plans onto the town's GIS map. So it's kind of neat, you can go to the particular location and find out the septic system on it. So that, that's gone up. Dues and meetings, um, that's kind of self-explanatory, so it's, it's gone up from a hundred and forty-three to three hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's not bad to have your health agent be informed of the latest changes in, in food safety. I mean, that's what we want. And training, training again has gone up from, uh, that's again, we, we need to, um, training classes, you know, is serve safe, and the other classes that, that, that Rob goes to, so. Those are the increases in the line items. Uh, so it goes from approved for fiscal year nineteen from a hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven to our request for fiscal year twenty of a hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and seventeen. And, um, that's it.
The fifty-one nineteen, health agent and Park Test, is that actually only health agent?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's all we have, it's just one health agent.
Um, he's full-time, right?
Yes, he is. We went for an increase for him last year.
So he had an eight percent increase, salary increase?
He's still actually below the, I, I think last, you won't hit Denise last year, but I, compared to the surrounding towns, what the health agents were making in, actually, he's about ten, ten percent below the curve right now, below what the average is for the, for the local health agents. So we didn't address that this year.
Okay, are there any other questions?
None? Well, that was short, sweet.
All set.
Thank you. Will we get a vote?
No.
No vote.
But we appreciate your time and effort.
I appreciate yours. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, John. Library. I think all of you are here.
Yes, we've got a full house here. Jerry Lawrence is our chairman of the Board of Trustees. Jed Phillips is our assistant director. And I have, um, a little explanatory paper for you each.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just real quickly, the first four lines are contractual. Uh, we are going through a reset, as you can see from the explanatory page, a reset of the directors and assistant directors' budgets to stay competitive. And there are, there are surveys at the bottom of that explanation page there to show how we compare to other libraries that are our peers. The increase in clerical salaries reflects the two and a half percent union contract, and an additional five hours of, um, financial planning and grant management, which we have requested. And most everything else is level funded, except for electricity. We have, the third page of the explanatory packet I gave you, is a little analysis of our electrical bills. Uh, we're over what we had budgeted for so far this, this year. Most of our electricity is spent in the summer. And so we had quite a hit last summer. And, um, the worst of this, of the heating, or the cooling season would be in next year's budget. So I feel comfortable asking for a fifteen hundred dollar increase there.
Sorry, like the council aging, you're open more hours, correct?
Uh, slightly more hours, right. That started, that started last year, so it's not like, we have a huge influx this year. We started that, um, a little while ago. But yeah, we're open to eight o'clock on Tuesdays and Wednesday nights. And then we need to have an increase in our materials budget just to stay certified by the state so that we can apply and receive state grants. Everything else is pretty much level funded. And one of the reasons for that is, um, that we have started a very exciting new program, which is passport processing. Much thanks goes to Jerry Lawrence, who came up with the suggestion a few years ago that we should be doing passport processing since the town hall can no longer do it. So that's a conflict of interest for the town clerk. And I did a little research, um, looked around, you know, initially like unsure whether that really would fall in our purview. We love the idea of providing more services to the town any way we can. Um, it required some training, but then we, um, I contacted a number of libraries in our area. Carver, um, and Plainville specifically have been doing it for quite a while. And, um, they think it's a great service to give their townspeople. So actually, when we decided, you know, let's go for it, we went to training by the State Department at the, um, I sent all of my people to training, I have two people who still haven't gotten trained yet, so, but they have, they're on the list to be trained, uh, this month, actually. Um, so all of us, all eight of us will be trained. And will be, we are now providing the service on Tuesday, Wednesday nights, and all day from ten to two on Saturdays. It has been wildly successful. It's just really nice, um, to be able to provide the service for the townspeople. When I contacted Plainville and Carver, they said, you know, there's no fluctuation in demand, it's just, there's always a demand for it. We have actually the perfect room for it, um, the history room is quiet, we have a really large table, we have a lockable file cabinet, we can provide the security, um, the privacy, uh, that's needed, um, to provide the service. And then, of course, the really nice benefit is that we can charge, we're required to charge by the State Department thirty-five dollars per passport for the processing. So that's going into our revolving fund that we've already established. The revolving fund has, um, in the past, um, slightly decreased because as you can see from the explanation page, although we have, um, lots and lots of new library visitors, last year we had about sixteen thousand. And then this year, or the year before last, and then, uh, we had sixty thousand. Last year, um, we had twenty-five thousand. Lots and lots of people, lots and lots of people in the building. But traditional borrowing has gone down, which is a nationwide trend. And those are things that you would necessarily, if you didn't get your material back in time and didn't renew, you might incur a fee for. So, um, consequently, our, um, our income from fees and fines has gone down. And that is taken up by our passport service very comfortably. So I feel comfortable, um, level funding many of these lines because we have a steady source of income to the library.
Okay, are there any questions?
On the first sheet, is there any particular reason why you picked these towns for salary comparison? I typically look at Avon, Berkeley, because in many ways they're similar to us. I don't even know where some of these towns are, other than the ones on the right, and they're much bigger than us.
When the board was considering Ellen's compensation, first of all, she's being modest, uh, five percent's because of her outstanding performance. And I think our board is unanimous on, on the, she's really turned around the library, uh, we're very proud of everything she's done.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that, because it's popular.
Part two of that is, I also understand there's a market value for a position, and a town our size can only, um, compensate, no matter how wonderful they are, so much. And you can't go, you know, too high over the market value. So in the past, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we always did a market analysis. So I contacted their office and to see if they could do the same analysis that they've done in the past for police chiefs, fire chiefs, council aging directors, and that's where the report came from.
So we created it, and that's the peer community list that we did for all of our other department heads over the past year as well.
And that's from the, I believe from the Department of Revenue, who tells us.
Correct, I use it.
Those are the towns closest to compare to.
The DOR?
Yep, that's when, we had a discussion about the fact that I use budget as the control and then population as second. And so I deal within ten percent below and ten percent above. So that when we become the median municipality, and those are municipalities.
Yeah, I mean, not that I know more than the DOR, but in some cases, that peer analysis seems a little off to me because when I looked at some of these towns, their medium, median income is much higher than ours. So that puts you in the position where you're putting a heavier burden on our taxpayers because we have, uh, maybe the same number of taxpayers, but a lower median income. It's just something I'm mentioning, so I'm not sure I agree with the peer analysis.
Well, we know the, the, the science of averages works out, some are lower than, some are higher than us. And like I said, really, it was, uh, the, the compensation, in my opinion, and well, obviously the vote of the board, was, uh, performance. And we don't think we can get any better. And we want to make sure, uh, we keep a quality staff that keeps the library vibrant. I don't think, um, before Ellen came, I ever had a parking problem at the library. These days, I can't find a parking spot. I don't think I've seen, um, you know, in the past, the lights on with night activities, night events, you're talking about. Uh, we did expend the hours last year, did more night hours, because Ellen did a survey in the community. And that's what the people wanted, so that's what Ellen gave them. But in addition to that, there's a lot of activities after hours, we've had wine tastings, we've had poetry nights, we've had, uh, you know, the sewing groups that come in. And, uh, so the building is, is alive and.
I think she's taken something that was very outdated and in providing service, but not really a service for everyone. And she turned it into something that's a service for everyone.
Absolutely.
So I think you've done a great job with it.
I think we're also a great stepchild to the school system. We help host a lot of events for kids. And, um, it's easy to have events for little kids, infants, toddlers. It's not easy to engage the high school age kids or middle school kids. And that's been a priority, and I don't want to pat myself on, on the back too much, but our friends at the library have really helped offset the budget and brought, and allowed Ellen to bring in a lot of the, uh, programming for those kids, along with the stuff we've done for young kids. I don't know if you read about it or heard about it, but we do some great programming for adult special needs. Uh, adults that live in our community and surrounding communities. And whenever I'm in the library or traveling around, I hear people from all the Bridgewater say, "We love your library, we love your library." And, um, you know, one woman said, "You know, my first experience at the library with my daughter was in Bridgewater, and it was awful, I said I would never go back there. And I came into your library and it was so wonderful, my daughter loves it there." So it's great, and you know, the, all the libraries are accessible to each other because of the sales program. But, um, like you said, we just hear great things about our library, and it's vibrant, relevant. And I, I think we sent over, Ellen put together a wonderful, uh, survey of the, of the needs of the library and our master plan. The best thing about the master plan, everything doesn't have a dollar amount tied to it, you know. Quite often, plans for the future, everything, money, money, money. The plan's just a lot of changing, and that's what we've seen.
How was the building, do you, are you looking for, do you think you'll have any capital expenses?
It's really a great building. We did increase the, uh, we improved the, well, we replaced the, um, flat roof last year. And we, um, we've actually incurred some savings in that line, and so we won't be asking for any capital budget articles at all this year. But instead, transferring money from the flat roof project into, um, enhancing our network. Our wire, our, um, inline, um, inline wireless, or not just the wireless, but the, uh, the whole network will be moved and enhanced. And, um, that's going to be, you know, a real, a really big asset.
The second, uh, part of that, that we'll be using with the leftover money with the transfer, is building security. Right now, there's no cameras, um, in the building. And I personally don't like, uh, that we have staff in that sometimes, uh, just one or two, uh, people in the building, and you can't see the whole building from the front desk, so you don't know who's there. Uh, also, we have a lot of young kids, and you don't know, you just want to make sure everyone's protected and, um, there's some little alcoves where people can be led to. We've been working with a police chief, and Ellen's been working with a couple of companies. Uh, hopefully, we'll have some television cameras set up inside, uh, for security.
And outside as well?
Outside.
Inside and outside, yeah.
Okay. Thank you all, are there any last questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you doing tonight?
Very good.
Good. Good. It's always a pleasure.
So what we've mostly been doing is running through any year-to-year changes.
Okay, sure, yeah. We have, it looks the, on the, on the 19 approved by town meeting, there was 12,000 more, but that was cut, if you may remember. So the, our increase for the 20 request is not as bad as it seems because, like I said, we had for 19, the 222, 560 plus the 12. So the effective increase is really, what we're asking for is in the vicinity of, let's say, 12 grand versus what it shows there. Because we had some, we had 12 grand cut at the town meeting for 19, if you remember. And here, the, an issue with us is we're hoping, we had a, one of our clerks, she was part-time, retired. They're going to be hard shoes to fill, believe me. I was hoping that we could get that position to go full. She was part-time, 25 hours a week. And, you know, like we've talked about, we spoke with Linda. Most assuredly, the job, you know, certainly qualifies to be full-time based on a lot of different things. You know, somebody new coming in and getting their feet wet and learning the jobs and everything. And then, you know, once they get proficient at it, having a full, to have two full-time clerks down there would be a huge benefit to the office. So we're hoping that can, you know, we'll get through from the part-time that we had to the full-time position. Hoping that can get funded.
Okay.
Anything else?
It's all, you know, pretty straightforward with the, you know, we have the, the online, 5398, it shows an increase for the contractual services vendor has increased their, their license fee. You know, it's all, unfortunately, it's almost like extortion. You have to have to have their software. We've had, we've been fortunate to have good success with their, with their, their projects. And, you know, based on Department of Revenue's feedback and such, they're doing a good job in the town. So they've decided to, they've increased their, you know, license fee and such on us by a couple of grand.
Okay. So, David, you, we've talked a little bit about the GIS, her bringing someone in.
Yes.
So what, I can't remember if we talked about this last meeting or if we talked on the phone about it. What was the timing for that, Dave, if we were to move in that direction?
Well, we're going to try to do it this year. What I'll do is, my, my thought process is, is to fund it. It should be part of the DPW department because of the level of work they have to deal with, public works. So what I would do is I would make it as part of that budget. And then we have to go to town meeting and see if it gets approved. If it gets approved, then we would hire somebody, hopefully hire somebody in the summer or maybe early fall, depending on how long it takes us to get someone.
So as far as budget, so there's a number of departments that have budgeted. How would we make that change? We wouldn't want to decrease it without knowing it's going to be approved at town meeting, right? So then, but then it would overstate the actual increase.
Yeah, part of, part of ours here is the, it's, it's a, it's a web hosting fee. You know, it kind of ties it in there, but it'd be a web hosting fee for the, right now, we have the online property record cards. And we'd like to see the online, the maps go online if that happens. So I'm not sure how we're tying with that, with that job. But, you know, for us, it's, you know, part of their software, so the taxpayers can, you know, have an online look.
And one of my concerns, Steve, is each year I've heard about us putting money towards this GIS system. And what I heard, and we confirmed with the water department just now, is that the center of town has still not been put by the assessors on the map, on the GIS. It still is configured for the old center of town. And it's been, what, two years?
We use, always.
So this is, so just to continue a little more, so it's causing problems with the overlays when they use the digital, forget the exact terminology they use. So what it's saying is, you know, maybe a fire hydrant should be here, but since the base is wrong, it's not there.
Yeah.
Why wasn't that done?
I'm, I'm confused about that.
May I?
Yep.
First of all, I don't know what was represented to you. But any changes that we received through the assessors' office regarding the center of town have been made. I know that there were easements taken, where they did the whole re-signaling.
So my, but my question is, the whole center of town's been reconfigured. So if we look at the, if we look, let me finish, please. If we look at the map at the GIS, I'm not done.
I thought you asked a question, so I was trying to answer a question.
Let me just finish. So we just had the water department in, and the question I asked them, because they're saying the center of town on the GIS system still shows exactly the way it did prior to the whole reconfiguration. And it's been completely changed. So what I'm asking you now is, are you telling me that if we look at the GIS system, that they're wrong? The water department's wrong. It does reflect the way the town is current, the center of town is currently configured.
And how are the assessors supposed to be responsible for that as far as that whoever was tying, or whoever? Obviously, you know, through deed changes, subsidies and such, you know, we would, we would report that stuff. On something like that, I'm not sure where that goes as far as.
Well, the best way I can respond is, I don't know what the water department represented to you.
Okay.
What I do know is any plans that come from the, through the assessors' office are updated annually. Now, I don't know if they were representing to you that they have street layouts that are different than assessors' maps. But what I can tell you is, and this is important, I, I think we need to have a conversation with the town administrator about your question about the GIS system. Because the assessors' maps are the base maps. There can be multiple layers on top of the assessors' maps. They can be actual layout of the roads versus what the assessors' maps show. So again, I don't know what the water department told you, so I'm not going to try to contradict anything that they said. But I can tell you, any plans that have come through the assessors' office are updated annually.
So David, can you help me clarify this because, what the water department said? Because I, I'm trying to, I feel like I'm trying to be sold, not just by you, but by others, that we need a full-time GIS person. And that it's very important for the town so that we can be more efficient for safety reasons. So if you have a fire and you go to hook up at a fire hydrant that's supposed to be there, it's there. If you have a leak, you know where the gates are. But yet, year after year, we've put money towards it, and I'm being told the center of town isn't even on it. So when I asked the question of the water department when they came in, what did they say? Maybe I'm using the wrong terminology.
No, you're correct. I think that the question is, is that, for example, the center of town, that Center World War I Memorial Park, is about a third larger than it was five years ago. So the question is, does the GIS mapping right now reflect that? The water department is saying no. I'm not sure, John is saying yes. I think he's saying yes. And if he's saying yes, then we have to look at it. I mean, that's the only way we can know the answer. If, this is part of my concern as to why we need a GIS person because traditionally, the board of assessors is the base map because all the map and parcels is really the crux of the town, obviously. But there has been a lot of, a lot of finger pointing that this person's in charge of this, this person's in charge of that. It's not necessarily getting done. If it is getting done, as Rick alluded to earlier, is, are people documenting it appropriately? So at a later date, we make sure that if there's an issue or a problem, that we can go back to correct it. And I'm not so sure that we have all those appropriate answers. And whether we spent 250,000 or a million dollars or 300,000, I know we've spent a considerable amount of money over the years. And we should be further along in the process than we are. And I think we need one chief person to handle it. That's why I'm proposing a GIS person. To answer your short-term answer, I've never looked at it, so I can't answer the question about the center of town. But I think that the center of park is pretty simple. It's either a third larger on the map or it's not. And somebody should be able to answer that question.
Yeah, just, I, I've been hearing these conversations about, well, we're, we're hiring more professional people. Water department needs money for GIS, assessors needs money for GIS. But it's a system that has not been updated and has not received the attention it deserves. And it's disappointing.
Based on what you said, that sounds like an overlay issue. And I'll give you another example. Out by Barrett's, where the parking right is, that looks like a parking right. If anybody drives by, you see the macadam, you see the curb stones, you see the painted lines. If you look at the assessors' map, that's just a white space owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So someone could argue, well, the assessors don't have the parking right on the assessors' maps. And that's correct because they do not exist in that manner in terms of ownership. That area is owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They can put the road wherever they want to put it. They can put the parking right wherever they want to put it. They can put any signage that they want. And yet, the DPW can go out and they can GPS and say, oh, there's a stop sign here. There's a sewer man hole here. There's a curb stone here. But that's an overlay to assessors' map.
Steve, could you possibly get together with the water department with a phone call and, and resolve this? And this is something that you're doing.
I'm not trying to pass a buck, but that would be John. I just want to point out that since I've come on board here, you know, 10, 12, 13 years ago, in one form or another, this has always been, you know, like you mentioned, finger pointing and such. Before it was GIS, we had problems with the mapping, not so much, you know, the whole town did as to who's going to do what. We didn't have any person part-time, the go-to guy or gal. So this has been a ongoing issue. I'm not, like David said, we can look at the center of town, because, you know, I look at that stuff all the time. And I'm not sure, like you say, is it a third big or such? If somebody points it out, you know, then that might, that might be noticeable. But until somebody brings that to our attention, we're not supposed to know every look and cranny of every assessor map. We just go through on the map changes that we get through deed, subsidies and such. We do the appropriate thing and, and change the base map, so, you know.
I'm just trying to reconcile in my head, if we can live with the center of town wrong for the past two years, why is it so critical to have a professional GIS person? Obviously, we've lived with the center of town in the wrong place.
Yeah, well.
So I want to move past this.
That isn't really a question for the assessors.
But I'd like to see the communication.
They're not the ones asking.
Well, just, just for the record, I don't think his finger pointing is a communications issue. And in fact, I was contacted by the superintendent of water department several months ago about the center of town. And I sent him all the maps that we have. So like I said, I don't know who's making representations to you. I know that I'm communicating with the water department. I know that I've addressed the issue of the center of town. And I think it's an overlay issue based on the conversation that I hear here. I'm not sure, although I'd have to go verify the fact, that the monument is shown on the assessors' map. Because again, that's all owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's probably just one big white area. But someone else, the DPW, might have a park overlay in the assessors' base map.
It, it's good to, you bring up about having, you know, a go-to person and that because even like with the mass, they call it, it's the mass, the Oliver system with the state. I use that in my business all the time. And from five years ago till now, it's changed, you know, so many times over to the good. So any, any person you bring in would be, you know, would be aware of those changes to our benefit. But I will say, it's always changing, so that, you know, as you would think.
And the Oliver system's fairly easy to use.
Yeah. Six years ago, it was like sideways Russian. Now it's, now it's really, I'm telling you.
But they'll even spend time on the phone with you, teaching you how to use it.
They run seminars, I've taken the seminars. And now they're, they're really more compliant with the towns, but a few years ago, it wasn't that easy.
I'd be happy to explore the issue of having a GIS person onboard.
Yeah, so the other thing is, for that, for this budget line, I guess, we'd need to know how much essentially would be the minimum you'd need in that should hiring a full-time person fail? The GIS line. So it looks like you have maybe, I don't know, somewhere around 3,500, 2,500, that's your annual fee. I'm not sure what makes up the rest of that. So if you could just get that information to the town administrator so that when he's looking at all the budgets that have GIS, so that we can look at what the true cost of a GIS, not a full department, but a position would be.
We use it for that, on that.
Well, there's several components to it. One is, we update our assessors' maps every year. That number is always a moving target. Could be 2,500 dollars like it was last year, or it could be 6,500 dollars in another cell for my business, depending on how many, you know, how many plans we receive in a given year. The other part of it is, as you know, we've had this discussion in previous budget meetings historically, is that we want to get a license in the assessors' office for our info like other departments have. That's approximately 1,000 dollars per seat, if it hasn't changed recently. And then there's also training for me on the system. And there's also GIS technical assistance because we have to be GIS compliant with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You remember, we received from some, some state funding several years ago to update our maps. And as part of that agreement with the state, we said that we would keep our maps, our assessors' maps up to GIS Level 3.
Level 3.
In compliance, which is tied to the 9/11 system with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Are we there? Are we GIS Level 3?
We have been for three years.
Okay. So David will be in touch with you and all the departments that touch GIS. But is there anything else, any other questions on the budget?
I just had one other question, online 5309, consultant services.
5309, yep.
That looks level at 28,000 dollars? Which I've just, there's a significant increase from 18 to 19. So I'm assuming there's no contractual increase there? Is that Patriot?
It's Patriot, it's, 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 um, the, it's for the Patriot revaluation onslaught. Also, there's some money in there, no exact amount, for appellate tax board preparation. And hopefully, if we get to it, to bring our maps, part of that is to bring our assessor maps online, web hosting through Patriot. With, that's still, still something we haven't done yet, but we, we, we would like to do.
So who are you paying out of 5309 for ATV cases?
Well, it, it depends on what, right now, we're in the middle of a, a large case. We haven't, it hasn't been adjudicated yet. So I'm not sure with, you know, it'll be a joint effort between us and the town manager as far as where the money comes from. But the expert fees on this one case alone is probably going to run between 12 and 15,000 dollars.
So is that part of 5309? Or is that coming, David, is that coming out of the town's legal fees?
So we pay the legal fees, but my guess is what you're referring to is the fact that if you have somebody else that comes in to be able to provide expert analysis on valuations.
Yeah.
Okay.
It could mean, it could mean one of the diff, yeah, sure. There's not, there's not exactly one answer on that, but it's all under that umbrella.
So you hire outside services for your expert testimony?
I, I'm glad to sit here and say that we, in my so many years here, it's only the, the second time we've done that. Because we, like, I tout what kinds of not, that we do a lot of that stuff. I've been there a few times, John's been in there a few times. And while I'm on this avenue, I might as well talk about the fact that when we have, you know, a chance to say, you know, bring them on full-time, or what is, what's, what's this been done? This is one of the components that really don't get out there. The, the case that we're going through now, the expert's going to say between, let's say, 12,000 dollars, right? This is something that I've done for the town, no charge in the past and preparation, and John has done also. This particular case is something different, a little more high-profile, so I wanted a, a lot of liability. So I wanted our best effort and best protection. Typically, on the smaller ones, we'll go in at no cost to the town, you know, except for maybe parking or something. So that's, so in answer to the question, it's, it's not really common. I think it's the second, third time, I've been here since '05, that we've actually used outside expert.
Okay, but so John typically testifies?
All I do, John or I, yeah.
You testify as an expert versus the town representative?
Yeah, versus, I mean, an outside expert, yeah, not a town, but somebody that we hire, right? We do it ourselves versus bringing another, you know, an expert.
Okay.
Steve is a commercial real estate appraiser. He's qualified as an expert in appellate tax board on many occasions. I'm also a commercial real estate appraiser. I'm also qualified as an expert at the ATV.
Okay. So normally, this would, this would be, not for the 12,000 dollars this year, this line might be somewhere down around 16?
I don't follow you.
So I, I thought what you said is.
Minimum 20.
It, it's. It's, yeah.
Minimum twenty.
Minimum twenty for the, that's for the Patriot. We had a sixty thousand dollar, you know, three years of twenty thousand a year, and then the extra money is for the, to bring the, it took us a while to get the PRCs online. I kind of held back in there for different reasons, and now we're going to bring on the the town maps online, so the taxpayers can look at them, and also, like, we just talked about any ATV preparations and such.
Yeah, it was actually approved last year, but we were cut twelve thousand, so we didn't go forward with the map posting this year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All set.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Eldon, I know you had asked for this.
Yeah, well, I guess several calls, in fact, my phone was pretty busy and wanted to know what was going on with our, our school budget due to the article that was in the paper was increasing with six point, almost seven percent. And I didn't have the answer, and of course, when I get in any kind of a situation like that, first, you know, I try to get a hold of the superintendent. And somewhere along that, communication didn't go through, because he always gets back to me. And so I, I finally talked to her today. That is not a final budget, as far as the school committee. They're still working on that budget. That was a figure thrown out, and it threw everything way off. And so, this is what I said, we don't, we meet with them the twentieth. But I said, if we get this kind of a situation, maybe we should meet, like, tonight, just to talk over this thing. Because if this is a fact, I mean, let's get into it, because it just finds, boy, what a figure that was. So the only thing I can report back to this board, that it's been worked on by the school committee. A figure like that popped in the enterprise, and everybody assumed that's the final figure for the school budget. And I was told today by, by the superintendent, it's not the final figure for the school budget. They're coming in still the twentieth. And so there's no need of them coming in tonight, because I just wanted to have an explanation, because wait till the twentieth, and that's just too late to act on the thing. So I, I agreed with, with her, and I called the thing off. I said, I don't know need a discussion, because we haven't got into a discussion of it. But it, but it appears in the enterprise that that was what the school budget was going to be raised to. And that alarmed not only me and David, David, it alarmed David, he called me too. So, that's where we stand.
I don't think that was a number pulled out of the air. I think that was a number, what I was told, was tossed around at the school committee meeting, but it was probably comprised of rough estimates, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I said. I don't know how it originated over there. It did get out, yeah, there, and, and of course, something like that, you know, and especially us, we didn't even have a chance to talk about it there in the school. Then I find out that that was not finalized. It might have been a budget, I mean, that was talked about, but, but, you know.
It's a very detailed budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And it does, it can be a bit confusing.
Yeah, yeah. So I said, there was no need for coming in, as long as I understand, because that would be pretty well, a very hard thing for this town to have to, so they, here, Russ is showing me that they're going to meet and they're going to be working on it.
How much, what, how much was the school, do we know how much the school budget was last year, roughly?
Sure.
So fourteen.
Four. Yeah, so from our town side, it was about twelve point three million or twelve point five million, and they received just under one point four million dollars in school choice to bring up to a total of about fourteen million.
And I think there, weren't there some indications that funding for the schools was increasing? Were more funds becoming available from the state level?
Yep, so chapter seventy funds do not go directly to the school, they come to the town, and that proposal is up four hundred thousand dollars year over year.
Our share?
Yes.
See, what appears on all the things, so when the articles come in there, due to the chapter seventy-six program there coming up. Now, I had a chance to talk to somebody on the handicap committee, and when that thing was passed years ago, the people that are carrying the money in the organization, like the Department of Middle Health, okay? And like, you know how we assign people every year to do something, like, I had the plaques last year, and did this. Well, what I'm going, like to do is assign David, and we've got to get some clarity on this. Now, because it starts down there where that, what I would tell, where that thing passed many, many years ago. And those organizations are supposed to be coming up with money for us, okay? The Department of Middle Health, because they have the big money to take care of these problems. Now, everything is, is coming back to us, like transportation. If we don't have the course day or something, we, we got to send a student to another school and pay the transportation both ways. I think that's got to be explored, and David says he'd be willing to, and maybe get the congressman in here, and how he told me today, we're trying to do the same thing and get some answers there, and where that funding is locked in. Because when that thing was passed originally, some of that money, they go to those organizations, was supposed to go directly to the communities. And this doesn't happen. So I don't have a full understanding over there, but I think it's, it's worth a shot to get to the congressman or something like that, because it's not something that just West Bridgewater is based, every single school, to me. But it just seems to be, when they go and and get into a budget thing like that, the first thing they bring up is that, is that program, you know? And I think, I'd like to explore it further and see just exactly if anything can be done there.
I think you made a, it's a valid point, Eldon, when we're, when I'm going through the warrant bills, you see a lot of invoices for transportation.
Yeah.
So it makes you, you know, for out of district, I think it's called, and you makes you wonder, so are we paying hundreds, thousands of dollars for one student? Could we be working with other communities if we're sending students to the same place? You know, could it be a joint effort? We have to provide, and we should provide the education, but.
So I think maybe, maybe we should explore that area there and, and get a role in there, and I'm quite sure other communities will come right along with us, because the way this happens. Sometimes things happen like this there, so it gives us curiosity to get more information on where these laws come from and how they're applied to, to our local budgets here, you know?
Good point.
But they have the big money. This person was telling me, they have the money, and, but that money is not coming, it's still locked up in their budgets, like, I'm not just picking on the Department of Middle Health, all those organizations out there have that funding from that bill when it was passed. I'd like to explore that exactly. I mean, are we getting our, or has any community getting our fair share, you know, of what that money is about? Because it's, it's probably billions and billions of dollars involved here, you know what I mean? It's not, this is not little, little money.
Right.
This is a lot of money, you know?
Okay.
All right.
Hi.
Thank you. John, quickly.
Quickly. Just to address the issue of the center of town, I brought up a copy of the assessors' map.
You always come through, John.
You can see the intersection of West Center.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
And I can point out the areas with the dotted lines.
Yeah.
Around the corners of all the streets, that's where all the land takings were done by the Department of Public Works, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And as you can see, that's just one large white area. There is no monument, because that's not part of the assessors' maps, the base maps, the planometric maps. So if there's an overlay, it may show in the DPW, or the water department, or some other, school department, or some other agency. But as far as I can see, our assessors' maps are accurate. And I just wanted to clarify the record.
Well, if you could, if you could have some communication with the water department, John, because my, my specific question to them was, number one, what's the issue? Number two, where's the responsibility? And they said it starts with the assessors' department.
Absolutely.
And that, that was their presentation when asked the question. So if you could communicate with them.
I said.
What you have and.
I don't know what they represented to you, but I was in communication with superintendent of the water department two or three months ago, and I gave him this information.
Could you maybe have a conversation with one of the board members, maybe the chairman, and bring him up to speed?
Maybe the chairman? Is that what you said?
One of the.
Sorry to hear what you said.
One of the board members or the chairman of the water department commissioners?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, I'd like to skip down to IW Harding, so we can let Jim go if he wants to get out of here.
That's fine. So, on the agenda, I placed IW Harding versus the town of West Bridgewater, and we will provide, we have quite a few slides that I want to show you, so that way you can understand exactly what the issue is or the potential issue is. So IW Harding, for those who do not know, we went out to bid, they are the contractor and developer for the East Street, East Center Street project. We went out to bid, and we contracted for them at four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and change, and they commenced work in the fall of twenty eighteen. So where we are right now is that we are in an impasse. The current status is, is that they are seeking an additional sixty thousand dollars above and beyond the contract, and I highlighted the specific reason why, is that they are saying that they compacted subgrade under the loam areas, and as they state, as provided under Mass DOT specifications. So that is their argument. This letter dated February twentieth is in response to my letter, next page, where I met with IW Harding on two occasions, January tenth and February seventh, and we'd spent a considerable amount of time looking at everything in between, and I concluded after considering all the facts, and I had stated to them that even if I didn't have the money, that if Mass DOT led me to believe that they were accurate, and that our engineering firm who was consulting us was inaccurate, that I would pay them. And after going through all of the facts and meeting with the engineer and speaking with Mass DOT on multiple occasions, it has become extremely clear that our engineering firm has a good grasp of the facts, that they are consistent with the specifications and the requirements of Mass DOT, and that we cannot substantiate the position of IW Harding. Next page. It's important to know that our contract is not a contract that we just created. Our engineer, who has been doing this for many decades, put together a contract, and you could see here that this is, our contract is a hundred and seventy-one pages. I wasn't going to print all hundred and seventy-one. So I just listed here, as you could see on page fifty-four of the contract, it states that all work done in this contract shall be in conformance with Mass DOT standards and specifications, originally dated nineteen eighty-eight, amended in twenty fifteen, and amended again through the supplemental specifications. So our contract is pretty clear that you must follow Mass DOT regulations. On February sixth, Harding, second paragraph you'll see that I highlighted, is that they said they have, they recognize and confirmed that the contract is modeled after a Mass DOT contract and required compliance with Mass DOT specifications. The point is, is that we are not in disagreement on this issue. As you, as you move down, you'll see that as a result, GPI is our existing contractor, they say that GPI extended the limits of work, this required additional subgrading, fine grading, loaming and seeding. Our last pay requisition included quantities for loaming and seeding, and that they exceeded the bid quantities considerably reflecting the increase. The point is, is that what they continuously state, and is that when you loam and seed, which is basically you have grassy areas, you add seeds, so that way you can, you can grow grass at a later date, is that what they are continuously arguing is that because there was additional loam and seed provided over the contract, that that somehow created culpability on our end, that we must agree that there should be more fine grading below that. There is no disagreement that more loaming and seeding was done, and as a result, we paid that. So they're not objecting to that. What they are objecting to is the fine grading below the loaming and seeding. In essence, they did additional work below that base area that they're looking for sixty thousand dollars. And what they did in order to substantiate their case is on the last sentence, it says below a few of these projects and one that we did for Mass DOT. The Mass DOT one that they cite is an intersection improvement on Route one twenty-three. It doesn't really matter what the other cities or towns did, because we'd have to pull their contracts, and maybe their contracts actually specified that they could get paid for that work. That's not important to us. What is important to us, as we've just established, is does Mass DOT pay for work done under the loam and seed areas? Because as we've shown, is that this is a Mass DOT contract, and again, as we additionally shown, there is no disagreement between the parties that this is a Mass DOT contract. The key is, if we could pull that Mass DOT contract on the improvements on Route one twenty-three, it'd be all over. Either Mass DOT paid it, and they would say, yep, it was due, and we paid it, or they would say that was done in error, or they weren't paid. So our representative from GPI is here, he has asked in numerous emails, he has asked in an interaction between him and their representatives, I had two meetings with the owner of the company, I have continuously asked him one question. Provide me a contract number for that job that you did with Mass DOT, because they all have contract numbers. Let's pull it, we'll look at it, it's pretty simple. And they have declined to provide us that information. They have been very clear that they will not provide us that information, and if that is their sole basis of their argument, it doesn't seem appropriate that they would choose not to provide it to us. So there's some reason why they're not providing it to us. Obviously, I can't tell you why. Next page. Back on October third, their argument again is, your response does not provide any evidence why we should not get paid for fine grading and compacting the subgrade underneath the loam areas. Again, this is the crux of the issue. And what I'm trying to explain is, is that we paid them for additional loam areas, no disagreement. Their constant argument is, is that they should have been paid for fine grading and compacting. So what is that? What that means is, is that they go below the surface, they make the surface extremely hard, I think you said to a ninety-five percent, Jim? So they make the surface extremely hard, because when you go on a road, for example, you want that subgrade area to be solid, so no water can get in there, which eventually creates frost heaves or some type of ripple effects in the pavement. The question is, why would you need that under grass areas? You don't drive on it. We're not worried about frost heaving on grassy areas. So it really doesn't make a lot of sense. But what they're attempting to claim is that although they get paid for subgrading and compacting under the pavement, they're looking to do it under loam areas as well. Now, their argument is as follows, next page. This is Mass DOT, their specification sheet. What they provided to me is in yellow, and you will see that the shaping, trimming, compacting, the area that they're referring to, the grading and finishing of all unpaved shoulders and slopes shall be in the preparation of all areas, including loam. So what their argument is, is that Mass DOT specification is, is that it requires to make sure that we meet those top, those specifications. Again, they're clouding the issue. That is the specifications they must meet. If you can read that once, five times, fifteen times, a hundred thousand times, you're going to notice that it never says you get paid for it. What it says is, those are the specifications you must meet. The next page talks about payment. So it says, and I quote, "Grading and finishing, other than subgrade areas," forget about the ground, because that doesn't matter, "will be included in the price of other respective items of work involved." Now, as I mentioned to each one of you on the side, it took me a long time, I have spent weeks and weeks working through this to really understand engineering speak. What this is saying is, grading and finishing is the work that is done below the ground, subgrade areas is what you do below the pavement. So when it says grading and finishing, other than below the pavement, is what it's technically saying in layman's terms, "will be included in the price of the respective items of work involved." What Mass DOT specifications are, and what they have always historically paid, is that when you do loaming and seeding, there is a price. So say that price is twenty thousand dollars to loam and seed an area. Regardless of how much grading and finishing they do underneath that, they get paid twenty thousand dollars. They just have to meet the specs that was provided on the previous page. They do not get paid additional money for the work they do below grade under grass and seed areas. Next page. We then forwarded, per their request, in my, my meeting with them on February seventh, is to get a specific answer from Mass DOT on this. Again, I gave them my word that if Mass DOT tells me that we, our consultant is wrong, and they are correct, we will pay them. Here is, our engineer did a lot of work on this, and here is his cover letter to Mass DOT, looking for further clarification. Next page. I'm not going to read everything that is in yellow, but you were going to see in paragraph I'm not going to read everything that is in yellow, but you were going to see in paragraph two, our engineer had a conversation with Richard Bilskey. He is Mass DOT District 5 Utilities Construction Engineer, and he confirmed, and you could see that it's underlined, that their, Mass DOT does not pay for that item. Furthermore, paragraph four, he then had a conversation with Mr. Bernard, another construction engineer in our local office, and he has it underlined, it is not paid for under item 170, rather, it is incidental work covered under item 751, loan borrow. Again, that goes back to what I just mentioned. You're paid for loan, you're paid for seed, you're not paid for grading below that. That's Mr. Bernard confirming that. He ran on to further state that if Harding had been paid, that he would look into it further and possible recourse would occur, meaning Mass DOT would claw back the money. And so we're starting to paint a picture that most likely, had Mass DOT made an error and did pay it, Harding is not providing us that contract number, because once we provide that contract number to Mass DOT, they run the risk that Mass DOT would claw back those funds. Next page. On February 13th, an email was sent to Mr. Kukarski, who happens to be an engineer in Boston, and the reason we sent it to him, his title is on the previous page, Mass DOT's Construction Contracts Engineer in Boston, who apparently reviews most of them at the state level, this is the person that IW Harding requested us to speak to, and they claimed to us that Mr. Kukarski was very clear to them that there must be payment. We found otherwise. He sent us an email, which will be, which we'll cite in a moment, that all he did was, as it says here, is he noted that payment for all areas other than subgrades include the price of other items, again, loan borrow, which means that Mr. Kukarski is corroborating our position. And not to be undone, on February 14th, we spoke to Alan Bardson as well, he works at Mass DOT's Construction Center in Boston, and importantly, is on the specifications committee. So that 171 document that I mentioned earlier, page document earlier, that is in reference to all of its specifications through Mass DOT, there's a construction committee or a specifications committee that oversees it. He sits on it. He notes, fine grading and compacting the subgrade is paid for only under pavement and sidewalk areas. Again, the point is, is that it's not paid the way IW Harding contests. He goes on to say that he corroborates the other engineers' issue, that noted that Mass DOT could find out the project location and agreed that if payment was made, it was done erroneously, and again, inferred that they could do a clawback. Last one that is emailed is that Mr. Kukarski also confirmed, again, the person that IW Harding told us to speak to, that only subgrade areas are paid for under items 170, that they are not paid under this item. Again, we have now spoken to four separate Mass DOT engineers, all who oversee Mass DOT contracts, this is all they do, and they have all given us the same information. The next letter is just a cover letter, just so that way you could see how the original letter that was sent over to, to Mass DOT. The next page, again, is Mr. Kukarski's email that he sent over to IW Harding, and it says, grading and finishing, I'm sorry, this came back to our engineer, grading and finishing, other than subgrade areas or existing gravel remain in place, which is what I quoted earlier in the specifications. Again, this is engineering speak, but it is clearly what Mass DOT's position is, is that grading and finishing, other than subgrade areas, will be paid from the work involved, which is the loam and the seed. So they are not paid for finishing areas that are anywhere except for under the subgrade. And we're going to find out what subgrade means in a moment. This last email, the next page, this is the email that was sent to IW Harding. IW Harding told me in the meeting that they were very crystal clear to them that their position was correct and our position was incorrect. Mass DOT was good enough to forward to us what they sent to them, and as you could see, all they said in response to them was, please see the manual. There is no additional information there. Next page. On the bottom, this again comes from Mr. Bondison, and Mr. Bondison says the following in the last sentence, last paragraph. "All grading outside of the subgrade areas, subgrade areas as paving, is intended to be incidental to the pay items of the work involved without specific compensation under item 170." Again, he's just corroborating what everybody else has told us, and the next page says, "Payment language in all versions of the standard specs include language under subsection 170 as follows," and it goes on to quote the exact same line, "finishing as other than subgrade areas will be paid for under those respective items." Skip two pages. Again, it's English speak, I mean, it's engineering speak. So all I did was, I said, let's find out exactly what the word "subgrade" means. And this is just directly from Wikipedia, who cites Webster's Dictionary. Subgrade is just area that is below a constructed road or pavement. Goes on to explain, subgrades are commonly compacted before the construction of a road or pavement, but you'll see that it has nothing to do with grass areas, it has nothing to do with seeding areas. And quite frankly, as I said to IW Harding in my meeting, it's common sense. You know, if five years later, that grassy area happens to heave a little bit, think about what you're doing, you're looking at a road, adjacent to the road is a sidewalk, adjacent to the sidewalk is grass. If that grass happens to be a little bit bumpy five years later, does it really matter to anyone? Why would we spend $60,000 that was not in the contract to take care of land, take care of soil below the loam areas of the grass areas? It just, I can't, you know, it just doesn't pass the common sense test to me. So with that said, the end result is as follows, is that they have done a very nice job, there is no issue with the quality of the work, in fact, I would say the quality of the work that they did is exceptional. The issue is, is that they're looking for more money than the contract calls for, they're looking for more money than Mass DOT is advising us that we should be paying, they're looking for more money than our engineer who is here to be able to answer any of your questions, that he is also advising that we should pay. And unfortunately, they have now sent us a claim notice. And so in open session, I want to be able to inform everybody as to what the issue is, but then we'll have to go into executive session and discuss what our next steps are because they are, they're threatening litigation at this point. And Jim Noes is our engineer. Jim, if there's anything that I said wrong, you know, again, you do this every day, I've had a crash course for a month, but if there's anything you want to correct, please, please do so.
You've covered everything, you know, we've gone over.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Jim, please. I'm trying to find the document, but I can't put my finger on it right now, but they are alleging, or actually, they're stating, that as a result, GPI directed IWH in the field to extend the limits of the work. Are they referring to this particular instance?
No, they're, they're, again, they're convoluting some things. What we ended up doing was, on the Wright property, Wright's Greenhouse property, when they widened that little strip there on their side, the lawn area, we, the lawn area would have been steep, so what we told them was, hey, grade out a little bit more and make it so it's less steep as lawn area. So it resulted in more loam and seed, but the loam and seed and the fine grading are two separate things entirely. So they're trying to say, well, GPI told us to extend it, therefore, we were entitled to the fine grading. It's two separate issues.
And let me just provide an example, because this is exactly why I said earlier, we have to make sure, we paid for the loam and seed.
Right.
So let's assume that in the field, Jim said to them, loam and seed, 100,000 acres, $7 million worth of loam and seed. If he, if he directed them, they do it, but he never directed them to compact below it. He just said, loam and seed it. They have, they compacted below it, and according to Mass DOT specifications, they are not paid additional money for that. Under my example, they receive $7 million for the loam and seed, but they don't receive a penny for grading and compacting below that. They are attempting to cloud the issue by saying, because he authorized payment for the additional loam and seed, which he did, and we paid, they are also entitled to additional compensation for grading below that. There is nowhere that we can find that substantiates that position.
It sounds like, almost like something silly to do.
Right. And then, again, David touched on it, but
Right.
The fine grading and compacting itself, which you do under the roadway areas, is two, you want to get the grades within, I think it's a half an inch, and then you want to compact it to 95%, so it's pretty much hard then.
Solid base.
Right. But you wouldn't want that under a loamed area because the water then won't drain, it'll stay within the loam and you're going to end up having just a soggy mess, so you don't...
The grass will grind.
Right. So if you look in the section under loan borrow, it tells you how to prep that area and has nothing to do with 170, it tells you you can rake it out, and as a matter of fact, if you do have it too hard, they'll tell you to aerate it and try to get, try to loosen up that material. So it's, it's two separate subjects as to whether, you know, the extra loam and seed and, you know, it's, it's different from the fine grading, but they want to try to blend it together.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Moving back up, David, if you would just want to run through those last few budgets.
So I'll handle all the budgets that are under the 845 budget hearings. Budget 1965 is Economic Development Commission. That has been, unfortunately, it's been a defunct commission, it has been level funded at 1850. Again, if, when we go through our final budget reviews, if we want to delete it or whatever, that's, that's a choice of the board. Right now, it's just been level funded. Town Council, I've level funded at $87,000. We've done a pretty good job with that budget. In years past, it used to exceed six figures, we haven't, we've been able to keep that down. The Veterans Budget, the only increase is contractual for the collective bargaining agreement of 2.5%. The Cable TV Committee is $1,100, and that's been level funded year over year. The Planning Board's budget is actually a little bit flat to a little bit down, and that's because the employee that is in there, that is no longer receiving longevity payments, so that has been lowered. The Board of Appeals, their entire budget is up 2%, the only change again is because of the secretary that is on that board. Rent Control, there is a larger increase in the rent control board, and that is as a result that we have had two transfers into the rent control board over the last two years, because as that board continues to get busier with agreements between the two boards, that secretary's had to work more, but again, it's only a $600 increase, it's not a lot of money. The ADA Committee, that budget is $500, that is being level funded at $500. Municipal Building Needs Committee is 1486, that is being level funded, and the town account is up 2.86%, mainly due to contractual increases.
Okay. Thanks, David. Public comment period.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that you take one vote to pass all the budgets along to the FinCom, please.
I can motion that effect.
Second.
A fair?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment period. Anyone? And Town Administrator's Report.
Sure. So as you know, every single year, we have to, we deficit spend for our snow and ice budget. We budget $91,000, we know that we're going to spend more than that. Fortunately, it's not been a horrible winter, we have spent currently at about $78,000 through last week. However, with this last storm, we will certainly go over the $91,000 once all the bills come in. There's been a change in the law that allows me just to be able to authorize it without needing a vote of the Board of Selectmen. However, I did think that it would be wise and proper to inform the board that I did sign off on. So that's what I'm doing, is to inform you that we have authorized deficit spending for the snow and ice budget. The next one tied to that is that this past Monday, we did have a substantial snowstorm. Quite frankly, I want to give the guys a lot of credit, they were out there all Saturday, Sunday night into Monday, and they did a really nice job. Again, we only have nine guys. One, one person is on long-term disability and the other person was unavailable, and so we only have nine guys doing the entire town. And so we ended up closing the town hall, library, council on aging, and the transfer station, water department, not because it snowed all day, but they'd already been out there for 15 hours, snow plowing, and that we would have had to have them at that point, instead of pushing back the snow on the secondary roads that were pretty narrow, they would have had to come out and they would have had to shovel all the drive, all the entrance ways and make sure that they were available, and they were exhausted. So although a delayed opening could have been an option based on the fact that the storm ended by middle morning, we just didn't have the manpower to be able to open up the building. So again, just an FYI.
I'd like to say that, you know, we went through to get those two big trucks, they were really utilized in this, this storm. And I talked to Chris about this, and now I understand other communities have followed the same path. Instead of going back with those little dump trucks and filling them up, they fill it up once and they go out. And, and, and they really come in handy. And we started on model for other towns who are now buying the same kind of equipment. So it was a good investment.
Next on the agenda is, is that I received an email from Senator Timolty, they are in the process of putting together their budget request for the FY '20 Senate budget, and he is wondering what our budget priorities are for the town of West Bridgewater. I would like to be able to inform him of at least two, and the two that I'm thinking is, is that I would like to still try to secure some type of funds for the East Street, East Center Street project that is almost complete. When I had spoken to Senator Timolty last year, you know, I was under the belief that there might be some funds available. It didn't come to fruition, but I do think that we should make an attempt. And the second is, is that as we have discussed quite a few times, is that to install a light at Matfield Street and Route 28, I think it needs to be our top priority. That's a state road, if we wait just for the state to do it, you're probably talking six to seven years, maybe that is still the option, but if they were able to give us funds at a local level and we use it and we could go out then, we could break ground next year, that would certainly be helpful. So in my opinion, I'd like to at least include those two, and then whatever other priorities it is that the board would like to include as well.
If there's a plan there, we did put some money in the engineering end of it for East Street, maybe we can do the same thing at a town meeting, try to get the process moving.
So I mentioned to David earlier that I would like to see if we could, not we, but necessarily see it done, some funding for research on the effects of Chapter 40B statute on small communities, how it affects the small community as far as the stress it puts on the infrastructure, whether it's the environment because of the relaxed conservation allowances, how it affects the taxpayers, the infrastructure, including school and safety. One of the things we always hear is, well, 40B's coming, we're going to need a new school. How true that is, I don't know. But just to have some analysis done, formal analysis and projections, so that we can better appreciate where we'll be maybe five years from now, what sort of growth we can sustain without having to do a major investment into our infrastructure, and then perhaps, based on the results of that study, we may find, or perhaps we could get some support in seeing if some of those, the statute can be changed. Because we seem to run scared every time we hear 40B, and without some formal study done, I'm not sure if our projections are accurate, but we should be concerned. At what point would we need a new school?
I have two things, and one of them, sorry, I think I reported to the board, was that we wanted to get that floodlight at Route 28 and Culver Street, and it did get put on the other end. I couldn't believe it when I come down one night there and it's like daylight there, they put two lights up, but I would like to follow up and get a light still down there, which is very, very dark. Another thing that was brought to my attention, and I haven't been down at there, is the old road that go down the shore, it's, it's in Brockton, but it was reported to me, it's, it's just a single road, there's, there used to be, you know, two-way traffic on it there. If that's the case, somewhere, you get a hold of Brockton, because there's going to be a head-on collision there, that's, that's ridiculous, that, that road, if there's only, like, a single road going down there, it's not even a double road. So the plow, the plow is, it's not something that Chris says is not, at West Bridgewater, we don't do that road, but maybe they did alert Brockton there. If that's the case, there's a potential real problem there, because, and you know, it's got a curve in it too.
Yeah.
And you could have a, you could have a major problem there, like I was saying. But anything, I, I think that meeting went all right tonight for the budgets and everything else there.
We still have one more of them.
For all the work you put into that, IW Harding and Mr. Noes, you always can count on him.
Yes, and the last item is, is just an update to the board, that we received a decision from the appeals court last week in reference to former police officer Dean Desmond, they have affirmed the position that the Board of Selectmen did the appropriate... They have affirmed the position that the Board of Selectmen did the appropriate thing in terminating Mr. Desmond in February of twenty fourteen. So at this point, between two civil service hearings, two visits to Superior Court, and one at the appeals court, we've run at every level. So I think that the town did the right thing when they did terminate Officer Desmond. At this point, he has one last appeal that he could potentially make. His time period will end up next Thursday or next Friday, depending on how they doctored the case. And if he does appeal to Supreme Judicial Court, they have an option to take the court, take the, take the case. They don't get it by right. If he does not, then we win and the case is finally over. It's sad because nobody wants to see somebody lose their job, but I will tell you, through those years, we spent a considerable amount of legal funds on this, but fortunately, we did prevail. And I want to make sure the board was aware of that.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay. With nothing else in open session, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session for purposes of conducting a strategy session, session in preparation for contract negotiations for non-union personnel, specifically the police chief and the vehicle maintenance superintendent, and to discuss strategy with respect to threaten litigation, specifically I W Harding versus town of West Bridgewater. Since in my opinion, as chair, negotiating in open session would be, would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And we need a roll call vote.
Raise yes.
Raise yes.
And can hand yes. Thank you.
Why not?